It's four o'clock. We're going to go ahead and start with this meeting as scheduled and called. And the first thing is called an order. Second thing is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment?
No, sir, not today.
All right. Third thing, budget workshop. Mr. Hewitt, we're going to be able to turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the past, we've had several budget workshops that were baselineed by the initiation of the commissioners getting together and starting off a budget season with their goals and objectives. It goes without saying that COVID-19 has disrupted significantly our ability to do that. And how we go forward is the crux. And develop our new July 1, 2020 fiscal year, 2021 budget for next year is hopefully we can get some, a path laid out in order to get there. And to that, to that point, I've just got a few slides. As a reminder, some of the things that we have to do is that we have to adopt a budget ordinance no later than the 1st of July. I have to render a budget message to the commissioners no later than the 1st of June. And the department heads must give me their revenue projections and expense projections no later than the end of this month. What we have done is that the commissioners have finished or developed their kickoff documents, that being the objectives that they developed through two meetings earlier this year. And I believe that Heather has made distribution to the commissioners of those. The departments have presented their rough drafts of their departmental budgets to me by, at the end of March. I have prepared skeleton worksheets. They are developed. They are very rough and elementary at this point in time. And where I am with pushing those numbers around on those worksheets is that I'm trying to do the beginning analysis and forecasting that goes, that's necessary in order to develop a proper budget. Basically, we've lost six weeks of that budget process to COVID-19 because that's all we've been doing is actions in response to COVID-19. One thing I did want to point out that once the budget message is adopted, is presented to the commissioners, y'all can't take action on it until 10 days after its presentation to the commissioners. So it has to lie and wait for 10 days, and that's part of the public hearing process. Now, I had originally said you have to adopt a budget ordinance no later than 1st of July. You can adopt one tomorrow for next year. It's just that once it's presented to you, you gotta wait 10 days and then take action on it at the earliest. So some of the considerations, and this is to the crux of initiating conversation with y'all today, is that you did develop goals and goals early on this year, pre-spring as a matter of fact. But by the mere fact that COVID has arrived, many of those objectives, in my opinion, are have been overcome by that, by that happening. Our tourism-related revenues and expenses will very likely be impacted. To what extent, I don't know. We just finished watching, watching the governor's presentation, and we hear different dates and different conditions, and when schools might start back, that's going to happen, or information forthcoming on that. So a lot of those what ifs are playing into us moving spreadsheet information around. So what I'm seeing early on in my initial estimation of what the budget might become is that we're going to have to make up shortfalls from fund balances. You've got a very, you're fortunate, the town of Holton Beach is fortunate in that it has escrow funds and a capital reserve fund for beach nourishment. There's significant occupancy taxes, unobligated, in what we call the BPAR fund. The general fund does have headroom in it as far as fund balance. The water fund is probably the one that's closest to being impacted and ability to do capital projects because there's never a lot of margin in water and sewer. And we've had two capital projects that have pulled out, you might as well say, we're $3 million out of capital, of the water and sewer fund over the last couple of years, including this year's lift station upgrade. So generally speaking, what I anticipated is that we'll need to push capital projects to the right in our capital improvement plan. What they are and to what extent we'll have to do that still, I don't know at this point in time. But I do, I'm fairly certain that the lift station upgrade for the next, the third lift station, that that one will be a recommendation that will be pushed to the right unless y'all want to engage in some type of dialogue on borrowing money for that. And I do not think that that's what the board of commissioners has set forth in their fiscal responsibility goals as stated early on. So what I, moving forward, what I'm proposing is that, is that I'll develop a budget message just as quick as I can. If you don't count today, about five weeks to do that and still be within the requirements of the law, that the board will let 10 days go by, and you have your regular meeting scheduled for the 16th of June. And then you've got two more weeks before the 1st of July that you have to adopt a budget ordinance. So that's, that's the, you know, the preamble into any discussions that y'all would like to have today. And that's pretty much all I have for leaving. I stand at your disposal.
All right. What do commissioners want to do in this workshop at this point?
Well, I thought that we might be able to have some discussions about, are there some services that we might say we don't do in the upcoming year? Just so there's things already on the table as, you know, what do these add up to? That there might be a bit of discussion about activities? Are there some activities, again, that have costs associated with them that might fall by the wayside for the year? Just some general, I mean, you said about the capital improvement, which is moving everything back one year. I think the lift station should be discussed because the lift station was something that had been given a top priority because of the risk. So if it is going to be moved back a year, that last lift station, I think it should be, it should be agreed that, yes, it's better to move it back one year and not borrow money versus the added risk of having a problem if we do have a serious storm. And then the other one was just, I know that last year we deferred purchasing a couple vehicles that were, I heard, being held together with rubber bands and chewing gum. And so if we move those to the right another year, is it going to have vehicles out of commission that are critical?
Anybody else say anything?
I think we just need to go through our, if nothing else, go through our objectives that we agreed to a month ago and decide, are there any that we want to take off the table? You know, for example, I'm just using this as an example, not saying it's good or bad. But the assessment with a second water tire, I mean, is that something we need to spend money on this coming year? Can we take it off and not worry about it for another year? That's just an example. But I think it might be worth, worth some of our time to go through these objectives and just see what can we take off the table right now or what do we want to try to do this coming year.
And I, and I'm assuming, and this is probably something we need to have discussion with, is that we want to maintain the current tax rate. We don't want to go up. One way to fill that bucket is to obviously increase the tax rate. And I think we need to have some discussions. We want to try to have, build a budget that has the same tax rate as we do today, and we cut expenses to try to meet, meet that. So there's probably some conversation we need to have on that.
I think the problem is, as David said, we're kind of dealing in the dark here because we don't know how much of a shortage we're going to have due to having no rentals. And no rentals have an impact on the revenue that we get for the water in the sewer, right? People aren't renting, they're not taking showers and using the toilet and so forth and so on. So I think what I, what I would like to know, so that you might have a little bit of a better idea of what the deficit will be, or the lack of revenue will be, is a better term, is to know what traditionally we got by the way of both water and sewer fees and occupancy tax or accommodation tax in April and May. Because we, there's a real good chance we're going to lose that, right? So if we, if we knew what those figures are, I mean, we get, we get roughly $2 million in the accommodation tax. And so if we know that we're going to lose $400,000 or $500,000 or a million and a half, we'd have a better idea on how we can fill, what we have to fill at least, before we try to decide how we're going to fill that gap.
I have, we track, I've tracked the occupancy tax by month for the last 13 years, something like that. And what I've done is I have gone ahead and made projections for our March receipts, I'm sorry, for our April receipts, our May receipts, and our June receipts. Now, that's still in this fiscal year and doesn't play into projections for next year. So what I, what I'm projecting to finish out this year is right at $17,000, the receipts that we would book in April, $53,000 we would book in May, and $121,000 we would book in June. And those are round numbers, okay? It goes without saying that, and I can, now, those are, those are projections, and I haven't done that. I've done a macro projection. We do, we come in right back to $800,000. But to give you some idea, everybody knows that our July, August, and September receipt of revenues here are the highest ones because they reflect June, July, and August months of rentals. And so for, if you just wanted, and those are fairly consistent, you know, throughout a year. Total, those collectively, July's receipts, this past July were right at 560,000. August receipts were at 636,000. And September's was right at 500,000. So those, those three months are about $1.7 billion in our occupancy tax revenues that come in. I don't know if that's what you were, type of detail you were looking for.
Yes.
But David, to tag on to what Mike was saying, can you do a budget of, if we go through the objectives, if you have a fairly clear idea of what we want to spend money on, can you do a budget of your expenses? And then we can come back and say, okay, if we get some of it from add-on taxes, we can place scenarios with the BPAR tax.
Well, you always have, you always have the option to amend the budget. The commissioners can amend the budget anytime, as you, as you would. What I was thinking towards in terms of adopting a budget, and I said, let's source, try to, you know, other than obvious capital items, source specific debt obligations from fund balances. And then you would craft the language of the ordinance itself using those what-if terms. You would recognize that you're appropriating funds for a specific purpose from fund balance, and you could caveat those draws and direct the finance officers, and I'm paraphrasing short sheeting here, is, is anticipated that BPAR revenues will be down. However, should the BPAR revenues reflect or actually be coming in higher, you know, the finance officer would be directed to offset the draw from the fund balance appropriation, you know, as, as it may occur. But if you did that, you know, it would keep you from having to come back in every time because we may have a second wave of this stuff, you know, and keep from having to come back and forth. And in the end, you, you spend a lot of time what-if and, of course, instead of taking, you know, a 60,000-foot-high look-down on it. But to answer your question, yes, you can, but in the end, you have to adopt an ordinance that says something.
Yes. I'm going through the scenarios that might kind of lead us to where, well, that final adoption needs to look like. But, you know, I understand what you're saying.
David, how does the quick math between April, May, and June is about $191,000?
It might be like 200, yeah.
How is that going to impact the current budget?
We're at 97% of collections there, and we did have some other revenues that came in. And, you know, they're depending on how, are we going to be open back up from the morbid up? And that's a, that's a $63,000 question there. And then, you know, so that's 5%, you know, if you want to say the whole thing went away, since we're at 97% of what we budgeted, I think we're, we're okay. Because remember, we had adopted our projections, we always adopt a little bit lower than what the revenue model will forecast. Always try to do that.
Well, based on what you, based on what you said, David, which was, I mean, April's gone. Traditionally, we get about $53,000 in May and $120,000 in June. That's 174K. Right at the moment, as of the beginning of April, we were just shy of $55,000 off-budget for accommodation tax. So we basically have to take in a third of the occupancy tax, may, our standard occupancy tax, May and June. We may lose most of May, but I can't believe we're going to lose all of June at this point. We may be hurting a bit, but it sounded to me, based on what the governor's...
I don't, I don't get your math there. We're going, we take in a third of our occupancy tax in May and June.
If, if we only took in a third of what your, then we would still get, we'd still get our 100%.
Yeah. And plus, you've got to realize, in that BPAR fund, there are other cats and dogs revenues, just like in the BPAR, I mean, in the general fund, you have the property tax, which is the, the big one, but there are a number of other state distributed revenues that are that are in there too. So I think, I think we're going to net out at right of what we budgeted, I mean, all things considered.
So the trick is really projecting next year, the next budget?
Yeah. And that's, that's why, that's why I say, to take the very conservative approach, our debt service is like 1.3, 1.4 million, $1.3 million on the special obligation bond. And I think that it is prudent to pull that money from the sand fund that's in escrow now. Unless you guys can give me a crystal ball on what type of forecast to make, that way I can downscale, downscale the occupancy tax projections to $500,000 or $600,000, and it's very safe. And that's, that's what I want to do in terms of whenever we're making revenue projections.
Well, we, we are lucky in one thing, that we did pay something off this year, so...
Well, but that's in the water.
I know that's in the water fund, but I'm just, I'm just thinking holistically.
And it's ripple effect whenever, whenever we go to, you know, if we're going to look at being pessimistic about our occupancy tax collections, that means if I'm pulling $1.7 million in occupancy tax collections in our summer months, well, guess what? I'm not selling any water and sewer that, during that timeframe either. So that has got to be considered in terms of how we're going to pay the remaining debt service on our regional sewer plant. But that in and of itself is directly related to the annual assessments, as you get. That's normally, the majority of that debt is normally covered by the 497 and 30. But I'll go ahead and take this opportunity to point out, debt service in, with the county plant and the collection lines that just got retired, that annual assessment, 95% of that was covered by that annual assessment. There was a little bit of it, the difference there that was made up with a dollar or two more in the consumption rates on that. So yes, you could, you, whenever we calculate what that annual assessment is in the water and sewer fund, it can only be for, because that is a special legislation, enabling legislation that came out, it can only be for special purposes of that capital. And it was originally intended to do the collection lines and the regional sewer plant. So I can't run operations off that assessment.
And I'm sorry, tell me again, where are you going to pull the debt service in from? You said from the...
Right, right now, you've got $3-plus million in the sand capital reserve fund.
Okay, that's thank you.
And since the debt service on the special obligation bond is for the sand out there, it is a logical fit that that would be an authorized purpose. Now, we may have to tweak the reason for having that, but, you know, on the first go-around here, that's what I'm seeing as, as where I would, would like to begin with.
Has there been any money appropriated that's not going to be used? For example, the generator sitting out here that we're going to save some money on?
Yeah, y'all, y'all appropriated, I want to say it was about $200,000. It was about $200,000. And that'll come in at, you know, comes in the way that we get the informal solicitations, half of that, if you will. And what, the way that works is if it's not spent, and this is the way I administer a budget, if it's not spent, or if it's not needed for some purpose that the commissioners want to do, other than that, I don't spend it. And, well, it wouldn't be for the purpose that it was appropriated for, for the first point. And it falls into unobligated fund balance by which you can reappropriate it for next year. So the short version is, if you don't spend it this year, you can reappropriate it next year for however you want it to be.
It goes back to the savings account.
That's what I call it.
Oh, yeah.
Back in the saw.
That's Lehman Dogg, yeah.
Is that the only...
That's Lehman Dogg.
Instance you can think of off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, yeah. I'm sure there, there's a other one.
That's a challenge.
But I haven't got to that point yet. That's what I was talking about, we pushing this stuff around. That's what we'll be doing over the next, you know, three weeks hard.
Well, what do you, do you want to go through the obje, can we go through the objectives then?
Sure.
And things that we just say, these no longer make sense given what we're going through, we're going to just take them off the list for this year and go ahead and do that?
That's fine. I mean, we can always have them back if times become better than we thought.
I have a simple question for Mr. Hewitt before we do that. This, I'm going to call it dream money that we've got that's coming our way. Does that impact in any way, shape, or form that we can benefit to offset our losses that we're addressing now?
The answer is yes and no. And primarily, where we will see the benefit from it is in some of the required surveying that we'll have to do that's associated with the project. Of course, it's not going to happen this year. As in the past, we've been able to use the required surveying as a substitute for what we would normally do on an annual basis. So that project's not going to happen this year, so it's all on benefits. Now, those are, that's a statement based on category G, beach nourishment. There have been other categories of FEMA damages that we've got reimbursements for, and we haven't had to spend the town's money. A good example are these two signs out here, the electronic signs that were placed one hundred foot of the bridge and one here just outside the building. We actually redirected that money out of the promotions budget, out of the BPAR budget, and will be reimbursed through this FEMA state of emergency act. So will we get that money? We basically end up with two new signs, and it didn't cost the town anything. So that's an example of, of the yes and the no. Is that answering your question? There's the, I, I can't say it often enough. We got two approved FEMA projects and one in the hopper. Those projects are reimbursement-based. We don't get the money given to us and then do a project. We have to do a project and get reimbursed. So the common mistake is, we got $24 million from FEMA to, you know, to get some sand. No, we only get the money after the project is done.
So Pat, I mean, do you want to go by, go through these one by one? Or you just want to, all of us look at them and see if there's any that we find we should give up?
If we just go through them one by one, it's just as easy as saying, everybody look at it and like. Balance the budget while preserving minimum fund balances is defined by the VOC. I think our minimum fund balance right now is 40? We have, or is it 70?
Your policy is 40 to 70.
40 to 70. And we're sitting at about 100, aren't we?
Your unassigned fund balance at... Uh, your unassigned fund balance, uh, as according to the last audit is sixty-three percent.
Sixty. Okay, I think we just have to put a question mark by this one because quite honestly, we don't know until we get into it.
Yep.
I mean, we should try to keep to this, but who knows? Um, ensure revenues from the town's delivery of municipal services covers the associated expenses. Uh, again, I think that was a question mark, given what we're hearing about water sewer, correct, David? So, question mark. These, these are, we hope to do them, but I don't think we can hold the, the budget cycle to these. Um, number three, and, number three, develop and track various financial ratios to flag negative trends. That's a process that can still be done when we have time. Um, ensure the town meets or exceeds annual financial budget goals. Well, um, yeah, right now, uh, that's kind of a question mark.
Yep.
I don't think anything in audits changes, um, quite hon- I mean, the audit is something very specific, not budget related, really.
Yep.
Okay, funding, ensure funding and budgeting for sewer lift stations three and two. We just heard the caveat for two. Do we or don't we move it out a year? And this might be the best time to discuss that. Um, that was a minimizing risk decision to do these boom, boom, boom. So, in the commissioners' minds and opinions, is it acceptable to take the risk of another year of two being in the ground instead of raised versus borrowing money to do it in year three as originally planned to get it raised and thereby reduce that risk of a mechanical and electrical disaster from a serious storm?
Borrow the money, get it fixed.
Well, the interest rates are low.
Yes.
Why, yeah, 'cause interest rates are low.
Because, because that needs to be done. I mean, because here's the deal. Anything happens, you know, we'd say we're getting overwashed, and that stuff's in the ground, we, 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 we go again. We need to get it up and, and get it fixed, like it needs to be done.
And one of the other issues we have to consider is, one, we've seen from the beginning of this that the cost each year increases a lot. And two, the two that we've done are the West End. The East End isn't done at all. So, if like one got washed out on the West End, but there was some damage, the other one would pick up the slack. But on the, on this end, neither one of those lift stations have been improved. So, they're, they're both in, although number one is at grade level, it's not below grade. So, I guess when, when I measure all those things, I would, I would be leaning towards borrowing money at, at the cheap rate that we have now and getting it done rather than putting it off, 'cause it's only gonna cost more.
The interest is gonna be less than the additional cost by waiting, don't you?
I think so.
And if number one station goes underwater, you don't have to worry about it.
We, we don't have an island.
It's a man and a half.
We're gone.
That's why we're not considering that. That's, that's at the level, but, uh.
Um, I, I think we had a unanimous that it's better to borrow the money.
Yeah.
So, don't move, don't move the lift station to the right.
Okay.
Okay, so that, number eight stays. Ensure funding for Flomike and Dorian FEMA projects, I think that stays an objective. And that's what, that's, of course, relying on the General Assembly fixing that little glitch, right?
Now, it, it's a little glitch that appears that, um, at least has the, um, first inkling of being fixed. I understand as of yesterday, there's draft language, uh, that I built before the hornbills at the end of the month. That'll reinsert that capability into, uh, the town's ability to do special obligation bonds.
Okay. Um, personnel, examine total cost of employees, including healthcare costs for benchmarking. Um, our discussion had been to find someone to actually do, um, a healthcare study, as I recall, um, to get, to get up to date information for the way that, that the, the pay scale was done. I'm just gonna say, is that something that we wanna try to force fit into this year, or can it slide another year?
Quite honestly, on our list of priorities, I would put it a little lower on the list of priorities.
Maybe wait until December to see how things are going?
Say that. I mean, if, depending upon how the budget falls out, to me, that would be a little bit, we can wait another year on that one, and I'll really be hurt by that. But if you're prioritizing, I'd put that at a lower level.
You can make a decision later in the year. We can always budget for it and then not do anything until we see, um, after season what things are looking like.
But I, I think, when, when do we have to, I mean, when does the current insurance plan expire?
The insur- May first is when it.
So, if we.
Yeah.
We're done anyway.
Yeah, we can't do anything.
We're done anyways, we'll have it for the next year, and we'll have to visit it before next May to, to make any adjustments, if that's what we're gonna do.
Okay. Um, evaluate the police department staffing against safety enforcement ones to ensure adequate manpower. Um, I mean, we can do the evaluation. The question will be whether or not anything in terms of adding manpower this year comes of it. But it doesn't mean we can't do the evaluation.
I want to put not to answer where I can, we didn't learn anything. We're trying to operate seven police officers.
No, 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 I, I, no, no, I understand that. It wasn't a question of cutting officers. It was, it was the optimum number against everything people want to, want to enforce. And so, it was a discussion on both things. What's enforcement, what, what are the enforcement priorities? And then what's the staffing that's needed to do it?
I'll, I'll, I wanna pile on there, and I'll like defer to the chief if I've not got this right. I don't think that the commissioner should be thinking in terms of one officer. He should be thinking in terms of three officers, because you gotta have an extra officer for each shift. And it, it, here's my rule of thumb, if it's ten airplanes, or ten buses, or ten people, there's always gonna be one in the shop, sick, lame, lazy, or in the house for maintenance. So, um, and, and a cop, a new start cop, you might as well say it's a hundred thousand dollars because of, you know, the, the salary, but you gotta have big enough for them. So, you know, chief, is that pretty much, I probably said it with less money, but please.
No, no, I, I agree, and, and in the brief conversations we've had, and like you said, it was all preliminary. But three, three is, three is where we, at, at a very minimum, just to even try to get us back to a reasonable level.
So, if now's the time, if you want me to make that type of, of, you know, what ifs in the budget in this coming budget, um, that's beyond a study. Um, but we can go ahead and cost those in to give you an, an idea of what the delta would be, um, from where we are now and what that would take in terms of, of cost or, uh, impact to the budget. Y'all need to give me that direction now, 'cause I got to, I gotta start putting numbers on these, babe.
The number of officers that are in the current budget here is eight?
Seven.
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 What happened to the eight?
'Cause I have a part-time secretary over here.
Who? We've got eight.
Got eight authorizations.
Yes.
You got eight authorizations and one body. I'm, I'm sorry, seven bodies.
Jeremy. Well, uh, hold it. But when I'm, either I'm too thick-headed or something, but the monies that are in the current budget, were they to support eight officers and one office person, or seven officers and one office?
There's, excuse me, there are eight full-time equivalents, police officers, in the budget.
Okay.
And those are fully funded and they're manned, correct? They're manned. Plus, there's a part-timer in the, uh, front office over here. That's a secretary at a thousand dollars. I think what, what I probably got, uh, tripped up on is that we pay for seven of those salaries out of the general fund, and one officer is sourced from the B part fund. So, as, as part of that conversation to take it further, if you want to price in some more police officers, you need to tell me where you wanna pay it from. If you wanna say that that's a direct tourism-related expense, the sourcing from the B part fund, you need to provide me with that type of guidance so that I know where to source it from.
Okay, but I wanna take you down memory lane for just a minute. It, it's been ten or twelve years ago that we had.
Ten.
Ten officers, and they wanted one more. And it was gonna be eleven, and then there's a hoopla over that, and they settled in at ten. And we have graduated backwards, um, so that makes no sense. And the hundred thousand, I challenged you a hundred thousand dollar a year for personally.
No, I started cost one first year, first year.
I, I wanted to clarify that.
You gotta buy the vehicle first, you know, we're talking about the assessment.
We went through this exercise last year.
Yeah, but we've got three.
We added one last year and it got taken out.
We went through the exercise of, of costing it out.
Yeah, and the three commissioners need to hear that. What, go ahead, Murdock.
Um, two questions now. One, I know we're lucky, Brandon filled it open. How long, in your opinion, would it take to find an officer, train the officer, and get him, get him going?
And while you're kind of the microphone, I wanna add, are we gonna be able to hold that officer that we were lucky enough to get that he just referred to, or is he gonna go back to his business?
It was a gym.
Right, so, so he's helping us out, and we're helping him out too. But, um, he's, he's gonna stay with us through the first part of the summer. He's, he's, even if he gets to open the gym back up, he's gonna concentrate. He's not gonna leave us hanging because we didn't leave him hanging. So, that's, that's an agreement that we have, gentleman's handshake. I mean, there's no contract, he can, he can quit at any time, but gentleman's handshake. We worked with him a long time, and he hasn't left us hanging before, so I don't foresee that happening, happening now. So, that will keep us hopefully full-staffed if everything works out through at least the majority of the summer.
But where Murdock, I'm trying to go here is expecting him to go back to his business, that's gonna leave you picking up.
That is correct.
Four possible n- new officers.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, and as far as the time goes, there's, there's so many factors that play into that. Honestly, once you get them here, the background check takes six to eight weeks probably to go through everything, the full background, fingerprints, you gotta check felony criminal records, the, the whole nine yards. It takes a while. After that, your training is gonna be twelve to fifteen weeks, um, during the summer. It's gonna be a little longer in the winter because the call volume's a little lower, so it takes a little, a little bit longer to try to get, get the officers on some of that experience.
Are we in the process of any of that with anyone?
No, sir, we, we not started because we don't have any available positions, so we, not, we don't, we don't have any applicants.
Yeah, and, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know, go to fill in advertising the vacancy when we don't have it. Nobody's gonna spend any time, um, because we don't have the vacancy.
The second that you, you touched on was a hundred thousand dollars, and you, you mentioned vehicle.
Right.
Is there any? Can they share a vehicle? I know that's, can we?
If you want to cut the life cycle of them in half, they can share, because it, it's just a, a common practice that when they, when they share a vehicle, they don't get tended to. What, Jeremy?
There's, there, there are, there are all kinds of studies out there that when you start hot-seating vehicles, um, if you, if you let an officer have the vehicle, and it's his or hers to maintain, they take better care of it, make sure the oil changes are done, and the tires are rotated, the, the whole nine yards, and, and it's a good maintenance program. You start hot-seating vehicles, they're not taking care of them, they run up, park them, leave trash in them, they don't tell anybody the mileage, that, you know, anything, the next person jumps in it, runs. Uh, you, you know, it, it ends up costing, most of the departments that have done these studies, and we have not done one specifically, but from everything I've read, most of the departments that have done these studies, it costs more to hot-seat vehicles than it does to, to rotate or, you know, issue a lot individually.
So, Brandon leaves the first part of summer?
No, he, he says he's gonna stay through the majority of the summer with us. He hasn't given us a definitive date, but he didn't wanna leave us hanging at the first part of the summer. I, I feel like, in all honesty, and, and this, this is just my thoughts, and again, this is a gentleman's handshake. Um, I feel like once he's able to open the gym back up, he's gonna come to us and say, hey, if you wanna go ahead and start looking, start that process, and give us that six to eight weeks, you know, to try to find somebody to get him hired and, and, and do that. But again, that, that would put us, that would just put us back to, back to, you know, I mean, we're still not. But even on what we are on paper out of that.
One of my big concerns, another possibility is that he's gonna be leaving, and I would bet big money on it.
Yeah.
Hurricane season is the time he's gonna be leaving.
Right. That's right, and, and he's been with us a long time. That's, that's a lot of good experience. Uh, even if you do manage to get a new officer hired and get him through the training, having an officer with, you know, been working over here for a week versus an officer that, I, I don't even know, knows you've been here six, eight, ten years, I, I don't know, I have to go look at his paperwork. But knows you've been here a long time, so if you, you lose some of that valuable experience with the community, he knows a lot of people here, a lot of people know you, and so.
Possibility of getting a police officer wants to move up to Oldham Beach from wherever he is locally.
Right.
The first place I'd look.
Well, last year, we went all the way down the road of adding a police officer until revenue neutral entered, and it was decided that that was one of the ways to get revenue neutral. When we discussed adding one last year, it was the question of whether or not the following year, we added another one. And I think it was decided, let's just add one at the moment and see where we go. So, the question is, if we want to have the town manager put in a scenario where we hire additional headcount, and if so, how many additional headcount?
Go ahead, I think we need at least one more. I mean, especially after all of this, I mean.
Yeah, but his, he, he said if you can do one, you might as well do three, so you can cover all the ships. I mean, I don't know if that's necessary or not.
Okay, just, I, I don't, I'm, it would be nice.
Yeah.
But, I mean, one is a step.
That's right.
And I don't know if we need to take, we probably need to take little steps right now. But I think at least one needs to be appropriated.
I would prefer to let David come back with three, so we can see what it does to the budget. We can always reduce it after that.
That's true.
Um, but to Jeremy's point, if it, if, if we're gonna add, he says three, let's go three and just see what it does.
Well, David's question is, what fund do you want these paid out of? I would, I would certainly think that at least one is strictly B part. I mean, we're, we're talking in, in truth. A lot of our, our needs is for, if we're, if we're gonna actually be watching, um, for safety, for moving vehicle violations, for parking violations, um, for all of the things that you get called from individual homes. I mean, it's, it's high season when we're talking about really needing more people, you know, on the road around the island, right? So, the question is, is, is one out of three B part, or two out of three B part, or is it fifty-fifty?
You could do one and a half.
Yeah, do do a fifty-fifty.
That's, that's, that's the way I do it now, is I, is I pro-rate a portion, so I can do that.
Okay, all right. Long-term plans, um, finalizing improving land use plan isn't a budget thing, that's us. Develop and implement a fire hydrant replacement plan for hydrants and disrepair. I think that needs to stay in there because it's, it's just something that needs to be done. Um, hopefully, there's not much money attached to it every year, but there is gonna be some.
What's the hydro goals? What's the hydro cost?
What's a hydro cost?
Yeah.
In place.
Yeah, in place. What does it cost to, to exchange a fire hydrant?
That's a Chris question. I don't know. He does, and as a matter of fact, I was going to say to the cost of, to the cost of doing the fire hydrant replacement plan. Chris Clinton's going to do the fire hydrant replacement plan. We're not going to have to contract that because he's near Chris Clinton. He's going to be able to tell us exactly how much it costs, how many we got, and what it would take to do that. So that's, that's the easy thing. I just don't know the answer to that question.
Develop strategy, implement plan, protect the beach and dune system, including keeping people off the dunes. When we discussed this before, it was first thing we need to do is really come up with different steps that we can take that would help. One of them was going to be education. I don't think there was really going to be much money associated with it in year one. It was going to be developing a strategy and plan. And I thought that was going to be sorted between the commissioners, town staff, and beach inland protection.
Looks like to me that that one's been taken care of by the governor.
Can't have anybody, well, at the moment, at the moment, so that can stay. Work with DOT to ensure all legal crosswalks are appropriately marked again. I think that should stay in our objectives. I don't know what budget is actually going to be associated with it, but it was something we really wanted to do.
Yeah. David, that's going to be involved in some stuff that we're working on, isn't it?
Yeah, through the GSAT, the Grand, Grand Area Transportation.
I'd suggest to you just leave that in there for ten, kind of being.
Yeah.
There'll be some information coming to you shortly on that.
Good. Okay. Find options to protect backup generators, lift station. That again was a sort of a fact finding and how can we do it before we jump in and do it? So certainly that can stay in. Complete a needs assessment for a second water tower. Frankly, we can push that back another year.
Sure.
Just push it back another year. Continue to support Lockwood, yeah, the inlet access to the ocean. This gets down to the, there, there was discussion and we were going to do it to have to discuss with Mike McIntyre if we went to DC about sort of a, if we had a five-year plan, what do we look at that we chop it up and say, over five years, you need a sort of an annual amount of this much money to do our beach maintenance without a central reach or a disaster mitigation as well as Lockwood folly? Did we end up with a number for that?
We do have a draft. I, I do not have that number in my head at the moment, but we have a draft that was put in and it's being considered as part of the budget.
So that, okay, so we'll see that as part of the budget. That will be, that will be a number that'll come in. Okay. Ordinance related, there's, again, it's a decision to be made by the board. It's not really a budget. Policies, procedures, that was a working together.
I, I would like to comment on that because it's probably directly related to, that one as much as anything is probably a good example for the board to, to get their arms around as to how the COVID virus is impacting our ability to get things done. You know, decisions on zoning changes, anything that would, that would come before the board would require the planning board to assemble, well, that's not happening. So those things are going to, they're, they're not going to happen as, I don't know what time frame that'll happen in. But just, I want to stress that there's a, as we go through these things, I said it before, I've, I've lost six weeks on just the budget process, much less every other thing that we, we do.
Well, this one, I, I mean, when we can get it in front of the board, it was ready for a board discussion and decision.
Yeah.
If it's July before we actually can start assembling people, again, it's July. But it'll happen, it'll happen this year. It's just which month. The whole advocacy thing is simply everybody set a top priority inlet hazard area, fight it back, and then support the advocacy efforts for beach and inlet activities at local, state, and federal level. We have a budget for consultant lobbyists. The other things are going to be for us to get things together and start doing more local and state work this year. I don't think at the moment, federal, state, or county level, you're going to get anywhere going in to try to discuss sand on the beach at some point in the next fiscal year. I think it will open up. So we do have to keep budget in there for these activities. But I don't think it's going to happen in calendar year 2020. I just don't. So it'll be sort of budgeting for the first half of 2021 efforts, David, for those things.
Well, I mean, you've, you've got to keep in mind an effort like the North Carolina Beach and Waterway Association. That was a conference that was supposed to happen in the spring. Then they moved it to June. We just got word today that it's been pushed to November. So that's a conference that, that's not the next year. It's, well, not the next calendar year. It's in this, I mean, it's this November. So there, there are those types of things that'll have to happen.
But those are.
But they're de minimis.
Yeah, they're not, they're not the, developing a plan and, and starting to do some office visits in Raleigh and things like that. So I think that's the stuff that I'm thinking, and that's the bigger ticket item stuff. And then review holding beach marketing materials and methods aimed at renters and potential homeowners for updating. I would, I would actually think that might move back a year.
We probably, we probably may need it now more than ever, but.
Actually, that's not, that's not a bad point.
Yeah.
I can tell you that just the scale is in information that we've been putting into the draft worksheets is that it just went up five thousand dollars. So it went from thirty-five thousand promotions last year to forty thousand projected this year. So it's not a huge amount that was put in there.
Okay.
Christie, we have, I'd like to get Mitzi on our agenda at some point to talk about what Brunswick County's doing. So can you, and that's one of the things we talked about in our Golden and Javis. Could you work on that or help David, help David remember to get Mitzi on the agenda?
I'd say the county, the Brunswick County Chamber of Commerce as well.
Commissioner Pat, thank you for reading all of that. I know you were looking to be the reader, but with my.
But you can't, I've been, I've realized you're fine.
Right now, I can't read a lot.
Well, then if we really quickly just go through what was in the capital improvement expenses, just to make sure that there's nothing in here that.
I didn't bring mine.
I have mine from last year. I have a budget message from last year. So we would, we delay the second part of Brunswick Avenue pavement.
I don't mind.
I see, that's why I thought, that's why I thought we needed.
You have to remember that our tax rate is set, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we've made a formal decision, especially when we did that streets assessment plan, about a hun, we tried to group the repavings in clusters of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is directly correlated to that penny. So if, if you want to push, push that to the right, then I think that you've got to take a penny off the tax rate.
That's why.
Because that's what you prompted.
That's why I'm asking.
That has been the approach previously.
So that, that stays.
Go down that street with those people.
Yeah.
Only half of it's paid, but that.
Again, for twenty, twenty slash twenty-one, you have a hundred and ten thousand in police vehicles. I think I'm working off last year's budget message. Sorry, I thought I'd be making a mistake. Do you just want to, what this?
Just trust, trust Pat.
Trust me, I'm reading these numbers. You had, you had a hundred and ten thousand for police vehicles.
Yeah, that's probably two replacements. That's fifty-five per. Yeah, and those, and those costs, when those police vehicles are fully equipped, you know, radars and cages and all that.
So that's just something we can just push back and say.
I don't think you should, I think you should let me keep it in there. And then if it's got to come out, then it's, as I said, because you're going to be rolling on rims.
Okay, let's see.
If you don't go ahead with your replacement program.
You have a generator relocation in twenty slash twenty-one. That's been pulled forward, correct, into this year's budget?
Yes.
So that one will be, okay. You have a dump, a streets dump truck at eighty thousand. That needs to stay, doesn't it? I, I thought I heard ours was in really bad shape.
It's not only, it's not only the dump truck, but it's also the vactor truck. And that's not in that capital plan. And that vactor truck's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I hadn't even put it down on the budget yet. There's some possible funding, funding strategies that we can go through in order to knock that back quite a bit.
Basically, what you're saying is with the general fund capital expenditures, other than the generator relocation, because it was pulled in this year, it's like, leave everything there and let's see. We just discussed what, we just discussed list station two and said, we got to keep it. We're going to keep them. Water tower rehab, you had another forty-six thousand in twenty slash twenty-one. I'm just assuming that, that that's just something we need to have.
Yes.
Okay.
Those were fittings. That one, that one, the normal round. Those were fittings for, you just said any big request.
You already had water tower two out in twenty-one, twenty-two, so we don't have to mess with that. You have a seventy thousand dollar truck underwater sewer and a sixty thousand dollar vat truck in twenty twenty-one, both underwater sewer. Vat truck. So you have just a truck?
Yeah, if you look at the, if you look at that sixty thousand dollar vat truck, that's, that's sixty thousand dollars for five years.
Yes, if that's the one.
Or six years. That's what I was talking about.
That's the one you were talking about?
Yes, the, the, yes, that's exactly what it was. That would be a lease purchase.
And we need that.
Yeah, we're running.
Which truck is that?
That's the big, looks like a Seaman McShirr.
The big vacuum truck. That's the one that, because what, what there is, we can trade that one in.
Yeah, and we're probably spending in the neighborhood. We've got a bill coming in or program maintenance is going to be in about the forty thousand dollar range. That's the second time in three years that we've had one of those bills. You can see it on a glide slope into the dirt. And I believe that that truck is ten years old. Useful life is programmed at about fifteen. It may be eleven or twelve. But we're getting, we're getting on the downside of, of what we can squeeze out of maintenance.
Still pretty good value in that truck to go against the neutral.
Not if you ask the guy that's trying to sell you the one to replace that.
Always.
To the weak side of the table.
That's right.
But we're thinking we can, we, we may be able to work a deal with him or trade him. It's the natural thing.
So both of these trucks need to stay? So you're basically saying water sewer is.
Yeah, you know what, though, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to follow back up on that seventy thousand dollar truck because we bought a big old duly signed equipment truck. And I'm not so sure that when this was adopted, we had to move that in. I might have to double check on that.
So it was really only general fund water sewer that had capital, so we're done. It's, it's, it's like most, it's like you're just going to put most of it into the budget and then we'll see where we are on whether or not we have to cut some, is what it looks like. Heather, do you have any idea?
Yeah, that, that, that truck, that seventy thousand dollar, since the next two years are like thirty-six, thirty-six and thirty-eight, I'm thinking that might be two trucks. You've got thirty-five per. That's why I double check on that.
Going back to the health insurance that kicks into May, do we have an estimate now of, of what the cost is relative to last year?
It didn't go up this year.
Didn't go up?
It did not go up. We're one of the only people in the area that it did not go up.
Are there some of the activities that, I know they're not big-ticket items, but are some of the tourism-related activities that we have possibly going to be impacted by?
Oh, absolutely.
Are there things that you're already thinking we're going to do without?
I'm thinking that we're going to have to understand exactly how far social distancing is going to impact our ability to do things that we've done in the past. The natural thing, the first thing that comes to mind is a tie-dye program. How, how does, how does that happen? But I, I don't know, you know, what are the, what are the realities of this new world that will come into? I, I can't tell you. But all of those things are, are in play as to how they'll be impacted. Right now, we're just straight-minded those programs. I don't know. And to include concerts.
Yeah, we have concerts.
To include concerts, you know, how, how, how's that going to play? What we, Christie, want to talk to the conversations you've had with bands?
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to go back to her question and say that some things like concerts, there's costs for that we don't get any revenue back for except for what we make in fifty-fifty ticket sales. There's not a huge offset there versus what we're paying the band. However, programs like tie-dye, there's also the revenue side. So you're not, you may have weeks where you don't have tie-dye, but you're going to lose that revenue on the revenue side as well. So you're going to be impacted on both sides. Day camps, things like that. As far as vans go, I've talked to the mayor in some of our meetings. Made some initial phone calls to our early vans. We have to let our end of May vans know some Memorial Day weekend, the weekend after. By May eighth, we have to make a decision. So we're going to be making some decisions coming up shortly for the, the beginning part of the season. And I think a lot of it, like you said, is going to depend on the guidance we get from the governor on how many people are allowed and what they.
But that's in this year's budget. It's not next year's budget.
Yeah, I'm thinking next year. I'm thinking.
One July, it's after one July.
It's after one July. It's after one July. And again, right now, I think, I think, from what the governor's saying, if we get to phase three, phase three allows larger crowds. Now, larger crowds means, I don't know what, like six.
July fourth concert, fifteen hundred, two thousand people out there.
Yeah, yeah. So it's got to be no restrictions by then. If, if, if phase three is not without restrictions in crowd size, then we can't have concerts. And, and that's, that's what I have to just, everybody has to just look again at exactly what the governor pad up in his slides. And the number of weeks and then what it means in terms of crowd size and social distancing. But I think it's phase three before there's not a control of some sort. It might not be social distancing, but it might be the number of people. And again, you won't know until next week.
Yeah, here's, here's what I do know is that the lead times on securing those vans are, you know, they're, they're out there. It's six, eight months ahead of time, like lead time. What I would, it's easier to pick up the fund and cancel them, not pay them than to be trying to get. be trying to get something. We've got a, we've got the best concert lineup of any municipality around here. I am not looking at not budgeting for those bands, you know, through, through the year. But unless you commissioners tell me not to budget for them, I'm looking at budgeting for them like we have in the past. And then if we don't, if we got to cancel them, we got to cancel them. But you got to get them booked, or you're going to be up there with Joe Schmo playing a cigar box game, you know?
Well, another thing, you know, they'll move on to another town or another community somewhere and then the next year, they say, I'm sorry, but now we committed to them.
It has taken years to get that lineup in place.
But you can't call them Friday and say we canceled. I mean, how early can you have to cancel?
I must be standing on that angle.
We're looking at $34,000 this September here. I will say that what they're asking when I'm talking to them now, because they have their side of it too, right? They've booked and we do have to book, like only I have to have my lineup finished by October or November for fall and summer or else they're booked somewhere else. But these people have been out of work because they can't travel too. So what I'm hearing them say is we have to be working relationship with Holden Beach. If we're impacted in the beginning of the summer, boy, I'd sure love to maybe come play for you on a different night of the week and maybe do a double header somewhere where we add up and get things in. So at this point, we haven't looked at cutting funds for next year, because what I'm hearing is, at least out of the first couple that I've talked to, is maybe I can get there on a, probably not.
Is there any fee if we cancel? Do we owe them part of the contract fee?
The contract has, we were in it where it talks about acts of God and epidemics, which doesn't, but it doesn't talk about us owing them anything. Typically, we don't pay, we have a good working relationship and we don't pay a deposit ahead of time for these bands. We pay them when they come, but there's also understanding there that we let them know a certain amount out. A lot of places have to pay a deposit because they haven't worked with them year after year. We try to reboot.
So I guess the question is, how, how much time do we have to give them if we're going to cancel? Do we have to give them a month, two months, three months?
Right now, they're asking at least, the two that I've talked to, because I only met in June so far, is at least two to three weeks. But some of the larger ones like 4th of July, the Tams, who are coming from Atlanta, may be different.
And we've had to cancel for weather reasons before we went and wake up and go to bed at 7:00, it's like, there's going to rain tomorrow.
I mean, if we can cancel it, then there's no reason not to include it in the budget, right?
The only other discretionary thing that I think of offhand has to do with beach rangers. And we've had them for a couple of years. They have been useful. But see, only other item that, that comes into my head that's specifically summer season or later.
We have done the recruiting on that and have folks lined up up there. They're just in wait.
In wait, they'll start there?
They're just, they're just waiting.
So it's really putting a budget together that's not going to look much different than last year's, and let's just see what the numbers show. Is what it sounds like. Aren't that many things that we can take out at this point?
Jeremy, what's your, since you brought it up, what's your opinion on the beach ranger?
Honestly?
Can they? What can they enforce?
Now you're going to ask me a question that I can't answer. As far as their code enforcement goes, they've, they're sworn with the town. I know they are allowed to do certain code enforcement.
No, they're not sworn.
They're not?
No, they're not sworn. That's, that's a welcome life in Congress. That's a public relation thing. It's strictly PR.
I tell you that comment, but.
One thing that they are good and capable, if they come up to somebody who's doing something they shouldn't be doing and ask them not to do it, if they give them some good and a hard time, they can communicate in the town hall and get these parts done and do it. So that's got to be standard.
They were never envisioned as an enforcement, um, it was all public relations.
All right, anybody got anything else? What do we need to do? Anything else this year? Fifty?
If everybody's satisfied, the next step is that David releases a budget message, and that will be the next dialogue we have. That's.
No, I, I think, I'm sorry, I think we should have another meeting where, where David gives us his outline of what the proposals are, and then we kick that around, and then we get the budget message.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see it before the budget message goes out and get surprised. And David, I mean, educate me a little bit here. You and I were talking earlier before the meeting, I'm more used to a corporate budget. So you, you look at all of your expenses, do you look at the revenues? Obviously, B part is part of the revenues, and you got to try to guess what we're going to get there. And then obviously, the other big piece is that of all taxes. So you could balance the revenues against the expenses by either pulling for the, from the fund balances or increasing the taxes. Is that right? Or you could go in and say?
Those are the, those are the, um, two mechanisms that the board of commissioners has under their control for town generated revenues.
Yeah. So when you bring the budget back, will you be recommending, we spend so much money out of reserve funds and then we keep taxes neutral or increase taxes? You'll be making that?
Yes.
Okay.
What do you mean, you do it three times? You're like, you're increasing taxes?
Well, no, I'm just, I don't want to increase taxes, believe me not. I'm just scared there's a balancing act there, which is how far do you want to take your reserve funds down or your balance, fund balances down? Because, you know, that's your savings for the future versus increasing taxes offset a penny or two. I mean, if we hire three policemen, that's three cent in property taxes right there. So I mean, it's somehow you got to balance all this. And like I said, I don't want to raise taxes, but at the same time, if we would miss and take your pick, we miss a million dollars of B part of money, then you may, you may have to decide, do I spend down my balances for the future or do I raise taxes? And that's just the mechanics of how it was done. But my goal, my goal would be not to raise taxes.
See, the other piece in that equation is the collection rate on taxes.
Yeah.
Your raise, what good does raising your taxes do if you're not going to collect them?
Yeah.
And I, and I've heard, uh, other beach communities are looking at, um, at collections rate, collection rates of 85% or below. That's what's being discussed.
Because of, um, labor saves and default on wages and stuff.
That's right.
Well, once again, Mr. Brown, I'm not advocating we raise taxes. Don't go out and say I said that. I'm just saying, if you look at the pure mechanics, that's how it's done.
So David, when would be the earliest that you would be ready with something? No, because I know your deadline, your deadline for the budget message is very clear.
I'm covered up. Every day with COVID, I'm doing the best I can with what little I got of me to work with, you know? Just, y'all just tell me what day you want to meet, and I'll bring whatever I got to you on that, on two days ahead of that, and I'll bring whatever I got to you, and we'll just have to see how that goes.
Well, I would, I would think that we would be better off if we held off doing this until it would be, give you enough time to not only present what you have, but we'll see how some of the things shake out into the, into the future, but give you enough time after this meeting to formulate the ordinance. So do you need two weeks to do the ordinance after we have a meeting or a week or three weeks or a month? Whatever works for you is, is the, is the point.
I've got five weeks to when I have to deliver a budget message to you. And I want to, I want to reiterate the, the fact that the budget or the budget message is a proposed ordinance. I think there's a preconceived notion on, in the past, uh, this board, but not only this board, other boards from other places, is that that ordinance is, is what David wrote up and gave to you. You don't have to adopt that. What you have to do is you have to have something to take action on. And I know that there is a desire to get this thing beat into, um, a palatable product, as palpable, palatable as it can be, before it's in black and white. And that there's been criticism of boards before that the, the budget mess, the budget ordinance was directly what the manager gave him in a budget message. Well, you know what? The reason why that is, is because I'm good at it. You know, I think I got a pretty good handle on doing these budgets and making sense out of what you guys have given me for instructions and trying to understand the community. It's the what ifs and the changing of perspectives and guidance that it, that serves to confuse people over time. So y'all just tell me when you want it done, and I'll bring it to you as best as I can.
Well, given that you're going to have the budget message done by the first of June, I would say that the week, let's see, I think Memorial Day is Monday, the 23rd, if I remember right. So during that week, because clearly you're going to have that budget message already started.
Wrong.
Yeah, so if there's any, any discussion about things before it gets finalized, it would seem that week. And I know that the last couple of years, there've been things that were in the budget message that got changed, that did cause confusion with the citizenry, because they read the budget message that said one thing, and they weren't little things that got changed. Those, and it's not, and it was because the board of commissioners voted to do it at the end of what had been five meetings already. So it's not, it's, that's not pointed at you. But having a meeting in that last week before you finish it is probably the right thing to do. So it's as accurate as it can be, because that's what stays in everybody's pocket once it's, that, that's, that becomes the average citizen's document.
When is the board meeting in May?
I think.
Trying to give you another week, a whole other week.
Well, first of all, you have to look and see if there's.
Availability.
Yeah, if we've, we've already given the time. So you want to see if there's a good day and then choose that so that it works for everyone.
Try for that then?
Sure. Not, I'd try for the week before the first of June.
Yeah, in other words, the four days after Memorial Day that we can play with.
26th through 29th.
And I, I, I want to go ahead and, and tell you right now, this budget message, I'm not going to try to win any awards with it, um, as far as, uh, flowers and pearls and things like that on it. It's going to meet the requirement of the local government budget physical control act, and we're going to try to make it as simple as it can be. But as far as extra analysis and things like that, what if scenarios that, that we've injected in it before, um, I'm just not going to have, I don't have the manpower to do that. Um, I've got a new budget analyst that's as green as a gourd, and, um, we're just don't, we're not going to have the capability to provide that information or the budget message.
I think last year's was pretty straightforward. There wasn't a whole bunch of what ifing, so.
We've got enough unknowns already.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Your motion? Mr. Brown made a motion to adjourn in.
Second.
Mr. Tyler second, closing out.